Do you care for a loved one? Well, of course you do, but I mean, maybe hand-feed them, bathe them. Well, you're not alone. Some 40 million Americans are caregivers for family members, increasingly older family members. Nearly half of all states are on the brink of an unpaid family caregiving emergency, according to research by Columbia University's Mailman School of Public Health. The research found many family caregivers are performing an estimated value of $873.5 billion. Some states have funds, we'll get to that later, but let's get more with the study's lead researcher, John McHugh. He's an adjunct assistant professor of health policy and management at Columbia University, Mailman School of Public Health. John, welcome.
Thank you.
And talk about the situation across the country, flesh that out a little more.
We found that unpaid family caregiving is either critical or at high risk in 24 states, so nearly half of the country. And just as an example, unpaid caregiving in Florida is valued at $60.6 billion, which as a comparison would surpass the economic impact of Walt Disney World, which is only $40 billion.
What are you saying maybe should happen? Because, yes, there's this huge chunk of money, over $800 billion. Are you saying that there should be more labor to provide this service? And then who would pay them? Or are you saying the people who are doing this caregiving, staying at home, should get some help from the government? Because in some states, they do.
Yeah, there are a whole host of issues. And first and foremost, with caregiving on the rise, there are several reasons why. So, one, we have an aging population, and that's going to put more pressure on families with older adults with more complex conditions. There's been a lot of pressure on the long-term care workforce, and you really can't decouple the paid workforce with the unpaid workforce. They really go hand in hand.
Well, when you say a lot of pressure on this paid workforce, what do you mean?
Low wages, a lot of people leaving the workforce. We saw through the pandemic, a lot of the pressures that we have on our long-term care system, and that has led to a lot of departures. And so there are a lot of areas, especially in rural areas, where there are significant shortages of, for instance, home health aids. And so that puts additional pressure on families to take care of their loved ones in rural systems where they're already really in a crisis from a system level, and then the family is then taking on the brunt of the responsibility.
And what about this administration's attitude towards immigrants? In some areas, immigrant workers are the heart and soul of the healthcare sector.
So that could put additional pressure on the long-term care workforce. So if we have folks that are being forced out, we may see additional shortages in certain regions of the country. One other pressure is really just the rise in the prevalence of dementia. So dementia care is more intense, takes more time, really puts additional pressure on families. And in fact, our valuation, about half of it was attributed to dementia alone.
So, suggestions. Some states do have some funds for people who have to stay home, and they're not licensed caregivers, but they're taking care of a relative. Are you suggesting there should be more of that? And where do those funds come from?
It's a state-by-state solution. There are some states through their Medicaid programs that do provide payments to caregivers. But again, that is for those that are eligible for Medicaid. The solutions really can be broken down. There's federal solutions, state-level solutions, and even workforce solutions. So at the federal level, really investing in the long-term care workforce, so, you know, better training, higher wages, finding long-term solutions for these staffing challenges for both institutional and community-based care. At the state level, potentially providing financial assistance, training access to respite care. And within organizations, really allowing workers to access the resources that they have to take leave to care for a loved one.
Yeah. Medicaid is under attack, as you know. With Medicaid so under attack, do you think there's any sense that Medicaid could be changed so that across the board, it offered more care to family caregivers?
I think there are solutions that can work within Medicaid. You know, there's been a lot of support for home and community-based services within Medicaid. One of the issues, though, is that the workforce, the supply, has not kept up with the demand. And so this puts additional pressure on families. Additionally, as we see potential cuts to Medicaid, family caregivers are the invisible workforce. So those cuts, it's easy to kind of turn your head, and people will take care of their loved ones. And so they will continue to do that. And without intervention and support, we are going to reach a crisis level where perhaps we won't be able to support individuals, and we'll see additional costs to our healthcare system down the road.
Well, not to mention broken hearts and people who die.
Absolutely.
Because they don't have care. John McHugh, adjunct assistant professor at Columbia University's Mailman School of Public Health and author of this new report on the state of caregiving in America. A lot of listeners I know are saying, "You don't have to tell me." John, yeah, John, thank you.
Thank you.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Robin Young in Boston.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the Mayrotra Institute for Business Markets and Society, hosting the Is Business Broken podcast, featuring conversations with academics, industry leaders, and politicians. More at ibms.bu.edu.
You know those radio spots that start with "Support for Radio IQ Comes From"? Well, your business could be one of those that we thank on air. You get the ears of thousands of intelligent listeners, and you'll be supporting all the wonderful content you hear on public radio. Find out more by emailing us at wvtfcorporatesupport@vt.edu.
If we were to see these shield laws get struck down by the Supreme Court, the abortion landscape in America that's already been rewritten after Roe was overturned is going to be rewritten once again.
I'm Rachel Abrams. That's Today on the Daily from the New York Times.
Tune in for the Daily, weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Welcome to today's Rono County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 27, 2025. At this time, I'd like to invite all who desire to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting for May 27, 2025. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 2:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 6:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RVTV 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Rono County's website at www.ronocountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place them on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies. Item one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change your order of agenda items. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir. Okay. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, sir.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, new business. Item one, resolution approving the Rono County Public Schools budget for fiscal year FY25-26 upon certain terms and conditions. Chair welcomes Susan Peterson and Dr. Jamie Soltes with Rono County Public Schools. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update to the 2025-2026 annual budget for Rono County Public Schools. Since our original presentation on April 8th, the school board has adopted a revised budget totaling $287.3 million. This reflects an increase of $4.5 million from the original version presented to you on April 8th. A copy of the revised budget is included in your board report, and hopefully you got the paper copy as well. This revision results from final state budget actions, updated revenue allocations from Rono County, and several key adjustments approved during the May 22 school board meeting. Overall, our total revenue sources derive 42% from the Commonwealth, 35% from Rono County, 19% from internal transfers, insurance premiums, and other miscellaneous sources, and then 4% from federal funds. As requested, our overall budget ordinance is organized by functional category. The instructional category increases to $157.9 million and is approximately $3.4 million more than the original budget. The noncategorical categories remains at $36.9 million. The debt and transfers category increases to $24.9 million with an additional $396,085. The operations and maintenance category increases to $21.6 million with an additional The technology category increases to $15.6 million with an additional $73,392. The people transportation category increases to $10.5 million with an additional $216,591. The administration attendance and health category increases to $9.6 million with an additional $95,268. School food services increases to $8.8 million with an additional $9,881. And finally, the facilities category increases to $1.4 million with an additional $7,482. The revised budget supports our vision of preparing every student and every school and every classroom to be opportunity-ready by focusing on staff and meeting our operational needs of our schools in a fiscally responsible manner. We sincerely appreciate the partnership and continued support of the Board of Supervisors as we work together on behalf of the students and families of Rono County. Thank you for allowing me to present this, and if you have any questions, we can fill them at this time.
Thank you. Dr. Soltes, do you have anything to add to that?
No, she did a great job.
She usually always does, doesn't she? Okay, board, any questions?
Yes, sir. I'm sort of troubled because, on the one hand, I think this is a good news budget. A whole lot more money from the Commonwealth, from the General Assembly. And then, Susan, as you pointed out, with some of the revisions to local revenues, another almost $600,000 in local revenues, so that the county is at $96 million in terms of the transfer to schools. But I guess the part that, I guess worries me, is the health insurance component. And I understand the school board made a decision to take $2.7 million out of fleet replacement to, what was it, infuse cash for one year in the health insurance program. I guess I'm worried that, from the school board's perspective, what are their discussions with respect to future years? I understand what they had to do this year to address that deficiency, but I'm kind of worried that if you're not able to buy school buses this year, does that cause a problem in future years and that cascades? And then likewise, with the health insurance, you know, what are we looking at two, three, four years down the road? And again, I've heard some complaints from friends of mine who are retirees with respect to the retiree health insurance. I'm sure you've heard all those. We hear the same things over here. I guess I'm just kind of worried that this is a good news budget in terms of additional funds, both statewide and locally. But I guess I see some dark thunderclouds in the future, particularly with fleet replacement and health insurance. Am I overreacting? Or what does our long-term future portend?
So I think in the long term, we have taken measures to change up our health insurance plan. We rewrote all of the premiums. They're a little higher than what we wanted to get them to, but we have made them so that they cover our insurance claims. And keep in mind, we have had a phenomenally unusual year, this year, for our insurance claims. We have had a lot of people that have had cancer, and these are very high-dollar claims. And as the county is self-insured, and we're self-insured, you know, you go through really good years, you go through really bad years. And from talking with our insurance consultant, this has just been just off the charts. It's the dot that's way off to the side that really nothing can relate to it. And we're really hoping that next year, this will settle down a little bit, and we'll get back on track, and we'll be back into a regular medical trend rate as opposed to having these really significant claims.
From when you were before us, in April, to now, are you still using the same average daily membership number? Or were you able to revise that, the ADM number?
We have not changed that. We're using the same one.
Same ADM. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Not at this time.
Question on the support cap. I think that finally made it, and so for the first time in years, that's going to benefit Rono County. From what I read, it was about $2.5 billion. Is that, that you folks will get money from the state, and we will have to use that money locally?
Certainly. It was about $3.3 million additional money that we got from the state.
Good.
So that was a direct result of different legislature, but a large portion related to the support.
Yeah, I think our local delegation was pretty supportive of that.
I...
That was fought hard by VACO, as well as the Board of Supervisors and Ms. Hooker.
Well, if I could just jump in on that, because it was, we were really pleased that we got what we got. On the other hand, there's a lot of funding out there that was not supported. And so for some of those roles that I know are very necessary and needed, but I'm glad it was a step in the right direction.
Yeah. We tried to get some money for the equipment and CTE, and, you know, that was chopped out of the budget. Didn't make the budget amendment, didn't clear. So, but we tried. And in a sense, that was a huge, huge for the state everywhere was the support cap. Okay, with that said, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I have something to hand to you.
Item C, one, C2, resolution adopting, one, the fiscal year '26 operating and capital budget revenues and expenditures for the county of Roanoke; and, two, the fiscal years '26 through '35 capital improvement program for the county of Roanoke; and, three, the fiscal year '26 fee compendium. Chair recognizes Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator. Steve?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There are a few items left on the agenda today to finalize our FY2025-2026 budgets. These include a resolution, and later in the agenda, we will have a second reading of the three ordinances to appropriate funds for Rono County and Rono County Public Schools. This resolution is the last piece of new business regarding the upcoming budget. The resolution is for the operating and capital budgets for the county for FY2025-2026, as well as the 10-year capital improvement program and the FY2025-2026 fee compendium. The adoption of these documents fulfills the legal requirements. However, it does not represent the appropriation of funds. This will occur, will not occur, until the second reading and approval of budget ordinances, which is scheduled in just a few minutes. Staff recommends approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal year '2025-2026 operating budget and the fiscal year '2025-2026 capital budget for Rono County, the fiscal years '26 through '2035 capital improvement program, and the fiscal year '2025-2026 fee compendium for the county of Roanoke.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions from the board, from Mr. Elliott?
No questions, just continued to be unpleasantly surprised by the continued growth of the dollars we have to put in for the Comprehensive Services Act. And I know that's been on our legislative program for many years, and it just seems to be getting worse and worse, and more and more dollars go to that. It's important. Those children need help, but it's a very expensive process.
It's not sustainable as it currently is.
It has more than doubled in the last eight years. It continues to rise. Okay, there being no further statements. I understand Ms. Shepherd may have a motion. Ms. Shepherd, if so, I invite you to make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to amend our fiscal year '2026 to '2035 capital improvement program and to approve the resolution with the proposed amendment. As you are aware, paragraph two of the resolution approves the county's capital improvement program as it is shown on the attached Schedule III. I would like to amend Schedule III to, one, create a new subcategory under Buildings and Facilities set forth on Page Two of the schedule entitled Parks Restroom Facilities, and, two, reallocate $500,000 that was previously allocated to the Hollins Library replacement to this new Parks Facilities category. This will reduce Hollins Library funding from $12,500,000 to $11,550,000. Each of you have been provided with a copy of the proposed provisions to Schedule III with the two amended categories highlighted. The purpose of this proposed reallocation is to provide funding for needed restroom facilities at Goode Park, Stonebridge Park, Hollins Park, and Green Hill Park. Again, with this amendment to Schedule III, I move to approve the resolution.
And I will second that. Is any discussion on the motion on the board? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Steve. Moving on to item D, first reading of ordinance. Number one, ordinance amending Chapter 10 on the licenses. Article Two, classified business and occupational license provisions. Section 10-30, contractors of the Roanoke County Code. Chair recognizes Doug Barber, Assistant County Attorney, and Mr. Peters, if he's here, our Commissioner of Revenue, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This code amendment is a clarification, at the request of Commissioner Peters, that the business professional occupational license, the B-Pole tax, and the clarification is that it applies to both contractors and subcontractors involved in the same work or project. The new section is taken word for word from the city's, Roanoke City's Code 19-48, which has been used as a reference by staff and citizens alike, and that we expect will help alleviate confusion as well as help assist staff in answering questions. We recommend that you approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a second reading for June 10th, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Barber?
My only question is, where's our sixth board member? Where's Mr. Peters?
He's next door working, I think. Probably watching online.
No questions, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions?
No. No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a second reading for June 10th, 2025?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval, first reading of the ordinance under item D1.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Doug. Item E, second reading of ordinances. Ordinances to appropriate funds for fiscal year '25 through '26 operations budget and approval of the classification and pay plan for fiscal year '25 through '26 for the county of Roanoke, Virginia. Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator.
Hello again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is to conduct the second reading of the three ordinances to appropriate funds for the fiscal year '2025-2026 county of Roanoke operating and capital budgets, approve the county of Roanoke classification and pay plan, and approve the fiscal year '2025-2026 Rono County school categories budgets. These three ordinances require an individual reading and vote by the board of supervisors. Item E1C does include the changes to the schools' categories as presented and approved earlier in item C1. Staff recommends approval of the three fiscal year '2025-2026 budget appropriation ordinances, and also recommends approval of the attached classification and pay plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from Mr. Elliott? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the first ordinance, the one that provides funding in the amount of $353,110,869 for fiscal year '25-26 for the county's operations budget, and then also approving the county's classification and pay plan for fiscal years '25 and '26.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item B, fiscal year '25-26 capital budget for the county of Roanoke, Virginia. Are there any questions from Mr. Elliott? Well, you got to present first, go ahead. We're going to try to move this along.
Just requires a motion and, you know, second reading of the ordinances to move forward with adopting the capital budget.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I may move to approve the ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year '2025-2026 capital budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Moving on to item C, fiscal year '25-26 Rono County Public Schools categories. Any questions for Mr. Elliott? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I make motion to approve the ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year '2025 and '26 for Rono County Public Schools.
Okay, I will second that. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motions? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, Steve. See you next year. F, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the formal forums listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes. Number two, ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a public use easement located at Rono County Tax Map, number 076.20-03-03, for a portion of sidewalk on private property along Brambleton Avenue, Windsor Hills Magisterial District. And three, ordinance to accept and appropriate approximately $98,550 from the Department of Criminal Justice Service, OP Ceasefire Grant, first reading and request for second reading. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
No, sir.
There being none, is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item G, citizens' comments and communications. This time has been set aside for Rono County citizens, county property owners, and county business owners to address the board on matters of interest or concern. While the board desires to hear from all who desire to speak, this agenda item is limited to a duration of 30 minutes. Each individual speaker shall be afforded three minutes to speak. Are there any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form? Have any forms been submitted? Okay. With that said, we'll move on to item H on reports. Is there a motion to receive and file reports that have been included with the agenda under item H?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file... Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file the six reports that are listed in our agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? There being none, the clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item I, Reports and Equers of Board Members. We'll start with the lady from Benin, Tammy Shepherd.
I do not have a whole lot to share this time, but as everyone was probably aware, I missed the last meeting due to being sick. But prior to that, I had been to the Capitol in Washington, DC, and actually had the opportunity to tour the White House and tour the Capitol Building, and was, the most interesting part to me was going in the underground tunnels that you've heard so much about, and I actually got to go through those over from the Senate and Chamber offices over to the Capitol, which I just want to thank Ben Klein for making all of this possible, and I appreciate it. And one other, well, two other things. One is, I just want to give a shout out to our General Services and to our Parks and Rec Department for jumping on some things this week and getting them taken care of rather quickly. So, thank you to you guys. I appreciate it, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Hooker?
Uh, yes, sir. Just a couple of things. I had an opportunity to go to the Katava Ruotans last Tuesday, and we had a group of, a good group of about 35 citizens. We were able to make a presentation of just an update in general on the county, some budget issues, had a great turnout, great discussion. Wanted to specifically thank Doug Blunt and Josh Fridley for all your help in setting up and, and making that presentation. But the second thing that I want to propose and offer to my fellow board members is, I would like to propose and then hear commentary after I finish with this statement real quickly, but I would like for staff to study some options for beautification and maintenance of all of our Roanoke County gateways and prominent medians, you know, more frequent mowing, what else could we be doing, inside budget guidelines to help beautify and really make a better impression, I think, to our visitors, to people who are thinking about moving to the area, whether it be just their residence or a business. I think we can do better than what's currently being done. Mowing of the sidewalks, which sounds kind of silly, but there are so many weeds on some of them that it gets difficult to actually use them. And for a county especially, it's a great amenity, and I want us to just fully appreciate and have the look that we, I think all of us want to have. So I'd like to look at costs associated with this proposal, and then let the board members see, you know, what kind of options might be available and how much it would actually cost. But I would like us to look at that, just to see how we can better beautify what we've got. Any commentary from my fellow board members? Is there a consensus for this?
Probably something to watch this year, I would just say, because of all the rain we've had, it's the grass, and the bushes are going to grow a lot faster in some locations.
Well, for, we, we usually depend on VDOT, but they currently have, I believe, two times that they mow, and it's just not sufficient. It's not sufficient to maintain our, our medians, our sidewalks, all the, the areas around our signage. I'm not sure that we're giving the impression that needs, that we want to be giving for our visitors, so.
Anyone got any comments on that?
I'd like to see what some of the, the dollar estimates would be to undertake that kind of activity.
Mm-hmm.
I know in the past, the Highway Department used to do that, and I know they've been eliminating some of the, the dollars they've allocated to that program. I think they had, I think they had gone back to, what, two, two mowings a year?
Two, three at best.
And, and obviously, we, we see that that, that's not working. So, yeah, it'd be interesting to see if staff could put together what those, what those costs could be.
We've had some similar proposals in the past, and then, you know, when times get lean, we've scaled back on it too. But I know that Parks and Rec, I know the Planning Department has been working on these projects in the past, and I just, I would like to look at it again and see what it would cost to have an ongoing plan to beautify those medians and grassy areas around our signs, so. Anything else?
The one thing I'll say, traveling to and from Myrtle Beach constantly, they, North Carolina has wildflowers planted in all of their medians, and they look really pretty, and you don't have to mow as much when you have those. So that would be a thought as well to put out there.
I would love to look at all these options, whether we do it in-house, or it's something that we look at contracting out, but I would, I would love to see what our options were, so I would appreciate that, staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Mr. Kaywood knows some folks in VDOT, and of course Doug knows some folks here that can put their heads together and figure out what to do. Thank you.
Be happy to get back to the board with some more information very soon.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have three items I'd like to talk about, all related to economic development. As the board recalls, I am your representative on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee. That's a committee of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Back on May 14th, we had a, a meeting out at Roanoke Cement that's located in Bodata. If you've never been out there and seen that massive industrial operation, it is truly, truly an impressive operation that they have there. They're, they're over 3,000 acres in size, and about 250 employees. They use a lot of energy. They, Roanoke Gas, I think, is probably, that's, that's the biggest customer for Roanoke Gas. They told us that they also use about 120,000 tons of coal a year. So it's, it's an impressive operation. But that was a very interesting tour we had, and also at that time, we also approved the priority project list, and we have, there's 120, 130 projects that are on that list, but we've tried to focus and have a priority project list, and we try to boil that down to, to 10 broad categories, and I think three or four of them are very critical to Roanoke County. One is broadband, looking at increasing regional broadband connectivity. A second one is transportation infrastructure, and one of the issues that we have had on our legislative program deals with the, the regional airport. Third area deals with outdoor tourism and explore. And then a fourth area, supporting and encouraging industrial site development, which we are doing with our partners, Roanoke City and Salem out at Woodhaven. So I think there's a lot of positive initiatives we have out there. Problem, obviously, is finding the dollars to implement those initiatives. My second item is, again, economic development. On the 15th of May, we had a ribbon cutting, a joint ribbon cutting with Eric, his group, and the Regional Partnership, and it was Bright Star Care on Brambleton. Ms. Spickler was, was part of that with, and I, and it was really nice meeting them. Robert Massey and his wife are the owners of that business, and it's good, good to see another small business coming to the county. And then my final economic development step was on the 16th of May, we were, if you, I think all the board members, we've all visited a, a local business this past month in our district, and I tried to marry that with Restaurant Week that's coming up in the valley, and so I wanted to recognize Lou and Ann at Burger in the Square on, on Brambleton, and great place. If you haven't been to Burger in the Square, I commend everyone. Check it out. It's really good. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Couple of items as well. Last Thursday, the Transportation, VDOT, as well as Commonwealth Transportation Board met with the Regional Transportation Authority in downtown, of which I'm chair of the committee. We heard from Dr. Spoot that in the future, he wouldn't plan on having a large pot of money for smart-scale projects. We had $1 billion this last go-around. We've had amounts less than that in the past, and also slightly more. The scoring metric has changed, and we, in the Salem District, Roanoke County, and in the region, didn't receive any project funding for Smart Scale Round Six. This is disappointing, and we are now gathering input from our Transportation Board members in the region to send questions to VDOT in Richmond, and some folks from VDOT in Richmond are supposed to be here on the 26th of June, and present to us their answers to those questions that we sent in. The goal is to change the metrics for measuring project viability in Round Seven, which will be due next year. We don't know if the current administration's going to proactively make any changes until after the 1st of the year. We'll have to wait and see. But going forward, we're going to be challenged with the specter of inflation, which is driving up project costs. We're also going to be faced with limited federal funding, and probably a pot of money for smart-scale projects that's going to be less than what we've seen in the past. So there's also more competition for less money. Northern Virginia didn't receive anything either, believe it or not. They have notified the Secretary of their disappointment in Richmond. The Hampton Roads Planning Authority, as well as the Richmond District, got most of the monies and most of the projects. The maintenance cost in the Commonwealth is a concern going forward. You build all these new projects, you still have to maintain them, and that costs money. For example, the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, which is a huge project to add additional lanes, the maintenance on that when it's complete, and I believe the cost was $3 billion, the maintenance is going to be $36 million a year just on the new part of the tunnel. So going forward, I think we need to be deliberate, and we need to decide what our real priorities are for Round Seven, and hopefully between now and Round Seven, there'll be some changes we're going to advocate for on safety scores, congestion scores, and land use scores, hopefully that will help us all in the Roanoke region see better results the next time. On a happier note, I want to give a shout out to Holland's resident, Catherine Haw, who won the Scott Robertson Three-Day Golf Tournament at Roanoke Country Club recently in the 15 to 18 category. I've asked her if I could caddy for her one day, but I'm not sure she wants me to. In any instance, next year, she'll be attending Vanderbilt University, and I know her parents, Tim and Jen, are very proud of her results, and it's a long way to go to see her play down in Tennessee, but maybe she'll come up this way in the future. So, Holland's resident that we're all very proud of. That's all I have today. With that said, we need to go into some closed sessions. The board will recess to the third floor for the closed session. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session. Item J, Closed Session Pursuant to the Code of Virginia. I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Subparagraph A, Part 3, to discuss or consider acquisition of real property for a public purpose and the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Specifically, the board will consider the acquisition of, and disposition of property for park purposes and the disposition of property that is not presently being used for any public purpose. And codes, Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Number 5 of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion in the community, including location or expansion in each of the county's five magisterial districts. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. The board will now recess to the third floor for the closed session. Thank you.